Good evening. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable channel two. Please note customers, Essentria Link and Cox Communications can view this program in high definition on channel 1002 and in standard definition on channel two. You can also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire TV on the Go Vegas app. The Planning Commission meeting as well as all other KCLV programming can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web the Saturday of the meeting at 10:00 a.m., Monday at midnight, and the following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair Cherry.
President.
Vice Chair DeSalvio.
Present.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Toussaint.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn, excused. Commissioner Flengas.
Here.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four. All comments made under this item for specific action will be cross-referenced to those items on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Also, there are agendas on each side of the podium if anyone would like to grab to follow along. Moving on to item number five, a motion for the minutes. Vice Chair DeSalvio?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, meeting minutes, for April 23, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining on this matter, seeing as though I wasn't at the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Flengas. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries. Moving on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that Commissioner, staff, or applicants, or member of the public would like to pull forward for action? Does anyone wish to speak on these items?
Mr. Chairman, we have some housekeeping items.
Please.
The applicant is requesting to obey items 25 through 26 to the July 23, 2019 Planning Commission. This is the second abeyance request for these items. The applicant is requesting to obey items 37 through 40 to the June 25, 2019 Planning Commission. This is the first abeyance request for these items. Thank you.
Thank you again. Does anyone like to speak on these items? Seeing no one, I will turn it over to Vice Chair DeSalvio.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for, to approve items number 25 and 26, abeyance to July 23, 2019's planning meeting, and 37 through 40, request for abeyance to July, excuse me, June 25, 2019.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries. Moving on to the one motion, one vote, the following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They're considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have the item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number seven, TMP 76248, applicant Pinnacle Homes, owner Mexican Golden Oil Exploration Trust et al., for possible action requests for tentative map for a 20 lot, single-family residential subdivision at the northwest corner of Hickam Avenue and Pioneer Way, Ward four. Staff recommends approval. Item number eight, ZON 76227, applicant Advanced Dental Labs, owner Wayne Murray, for possible action request for rezoning from R4 to C1 at 321 South Maryland Parkway, Ward three. Staff recommends approval. Related item, SDR 76228, for possible action requests for site development plan review for proposed two-story, 5,732 square-foot dental laboratory with waivers to allow five parking spaces where 32 spaces are required. Lot width of 50 feet, or 100 feet is required. Lot coverage of 66 percent where 50 percent is allowed. A zero-foot side yard setback on the north and five-foot yard setback on the south where 10 feet is required. A five-foot wide landscape buffer along the west perimeter where 10 feet is required, and a zero-foot wide landscape buffer along the south perimeter where eight feet is required. Ward three, staff recommends approval. Item number 10, VAR 76200, 00, excuse me, applicant owner School Board of Trustees, for possible action requests for a variance to allow deviations from Title 19.10.020, CV Development Standards at 1100 East St. Louis Avenue, Ward three. Staff recommends approval. Related item number 11, SDR 76201, for possible action requests for site development plan review for proposed 98,107 square-foot public school, primary, Ward three. Staff recommends approval. Item number 12, VAR 76266, applicant owner Edward Gallen Stockton, for possible action request for a variance to allow two accessory structures to be located in front of the primary residence where such is not allowed at 7151 Whittig Avenue, Ward six. Staff recommends approval. Related item number 13, SUP 76217, for possible action request for a special use permit for proposed, proposed accessory structure use, Ward six. Staff recommends approval. Related item number 14, VAR 7622, applicant owner RRA, no, excuse me, this isn't related. Number 14, VAR 76222, applicant owner RRA Holdings LLC, for possible action request for a variance to allow two proposed nine-square-foot wall signs where one, two-foot square, two-square-foot wall sign is allowed at 1,876 South Buffalo Drive, Ward one. Staff recommends approval. Item number 15, SUP 76219, applicant owner TUPR2 LLC, for possible action request for a special use permit for proposed horse corral or stable use at 222-310-324 and 432 South Main Street, Ward five. Staff recommends approval. Related item number 16, SDR 76220, for possible action request for a site development plan review for proposed commercial recreation amusement with waivers of the interim downtown Las Vegas Development Standards, Ward five. Staff recommends approval. Item number 17, SUP 76152, applicant owner Elcorn Wallopie LLC, for possible action request for a special use permit for proposed 2,085 square-foot liquor sales use at 7161 North Wallopie Way, Ward six. Staff recommends approval. Item number 18, SUP 76223, applicant SNS Grooming NV LLC, owner GNI Eight Village Square LLC, for possible action request for a special use permit for proposed 2,750 square-foot beer-wine cooler on-sale establishment use with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a church house of worship where 400 feet is required at 9340 West Sahara Ave., Suite 100, Ward two. Staff recommends approval. Item number 19, SUP 76224, applicant Taste of Africa, owner FAEC Holdings, Warilla LLC, for possible action request for a special use for a proposed 12,741 square-foot tavern limited establishment use with a 1,245 square-foot outdoor patio at 450 Fremont Street, Suite 290, Ward five. Staff recommends approval. Item number 20, SUP 76233, applicant owner Juan Polito, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an existing accessory structure use at 804 Lacy Lane, Ward one. Staff recommends approval. Item number 21, SNC 76185, applicant owner Richmond American Homes of Nevada Inc., for possible action request for a street name change from Albatross Links Avenue to Sky Bluff Court, west of Crossbridge Drive, cross-bridge drive, south of Sun Creek Drive, Ward two. Staff recommends approval. Item number 22, VAC 76149, applicant owner AMD United Holdings LLC, for possible action request for petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements on the north side of Charleston Boulevard, east of Brush Street, Ward one. Staff recommends approval. And before I go to staff, I will say I will be abstaining from items number 15 and 16. My company has a contractual relationship with the owner of the property.
Mr. Chairman, staff would like to add the following conditions of approval to item number seven, TMP 76248, as requested by the applicant. First condition was all homes within the subdivision shall be limited to one story. And the second condition is the perimeter screen wall along the northern property line shall be seven foot, four inches, two additional courses in height. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here for number seven? If you could please come up. I need your name and address for the record, and if you agree to the additional conditions.
Good evening. Laura Dreia, 520 South Forest Street. I'm here with Frank Wyatt of Pinnacle Homes, and he agrees to those conditions. In fact, he's the one that suggested them.
Oh, thanks, Frank. Okay. I don't know, Frank. Vice Chair DeSalvio?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, before we vote, I'll be abstaining on items number eight and nine, as I have a contractual relationship with the applicant on this particular property.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the disclosure. Vice Chair DeSalvio?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I would entertain a motion to approve all motions, one motion, one vote items on today's agenda, and adding both staff-mentioned conditions on item number seven.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number seven is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within seven days. Items 10 through 13, 17, 18, and 21 are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days. And items eight, nine, 14 through 16, 19, 20, and 22 will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on July 3, 2019.
Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing items. Item number 23, abeyance GPA 75931, applicant owner John J. Sarah Pacilla Trust, for possible action request for general plan amendment from PCD to R on the west side of El Capitan Way, north of O'Hare Road, Ward six. Staff recommends denial. Related item 24, abeyance ZON 75932, for possible action request for rezoning from U-zone, general plan, excuse me, to RD, Ward six. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject parcel is surrounded by property that is zoned residential plan development three and Clark County residential agriculture. Residential plan development three zoning limits density to three units per acre, while the proposed general plan amendment would allow 5.49 dwelling units per acre. Staff finds the proposed density would be incompatible with surrounding residential development, and therefore recommends denial of both requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, John Vornsand, that's V as in Victor, O-R-N-S-A-N-D, 62 Swan Circle, Henderson, representing the application. This parcel, if I could draw your attention to the overhead, parcel has existed as a one-and-a-quarter acre lot since at least the early 1960s. In 2002, the property was under the same original ownership for over 30 years, when the adjacent property to the north, west, and south was rezoned to and developed as an RPD III. The property owner apparently at that time did not want to sell to those developers and just maintained that lot as an acre-and-a-quarter lot. The present owner and applicant purchased this property in 2007, about 12 years ago. He is requesting RD zoning for three lots. That would be at a density of, there are 14,100 square-foot lots, a density of 2.4 dwelling units per acre. The applicant did request the GPA, general plan amendment to residential low. However, we would be willing to accept a reduction to either desert rural, which allows a maximum density of 2.49 units per acre, or rural density residential, which would accommodate the three lots. The development of this parcel would actually be the last parcel remnant on the west side of El Capitan between Log Cabin Way and Horse Drive. This would complete the development of the west side of El Capitan insofar as off-site improvements are concerned, and be the last portion of the equestrian trail that runs from Horse Drive down to Log Cabin Way. That would be developed as a 30-foot easement across the front of the lots. The properties are also of sufficient width and depth to allow for a circular or hammerhead driveway to access El Capitan. We did hold a neighborhood meeting. One neighbor did come forward, Dave Morgan, who lives, he owns his five acres directly across El Capitan. He also indicated he represented his neighbors. He said there was no objection from the neighborhood on the east side of El Capitan, subject to single-story homes only. The applicant is in agreement to single-story homes only. This property is far too small at one-and-a-quarter acres to be developed as any type of a planned community development. Respectfully request your approval for the three RD lots. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in these items? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Turn it over to the commission for discussion. Vice Chair DeSalvio?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thanks, John. Since we've met, I've received some issues with the density, and as you stated, you have no problem going to the two lots if it needed to be?
If we have to go for two lots, we prefer the three. What happens with two lots, I might point out. The actual envelope, the building envelope, this would be the layout for two lots. And again, we're at 2.4 units per acre with three lots. We're actually at a lesser density than the RPD III to our west, north, and south. But this would be the layout for two lots, north, probably ought to turn that in a proper direction. The building envelope, if we were to go with three lots, the actual building envelope would be at a depth 65 feet or by 102 feet. That's after the setbacks are taken into consideration. That would allow a 6,630 square foot of buildable area. Going to two lots because of the setbacks, as you can see, you've got a 50-foot setback in the front, 35 in the rear, 10 on each side, it leaves a building envelope of 40 feet deep by 148 feet wide, and that would be a total of 5,920 square feet. We would certainly accept a reduction to two lots if need be, to RE, but we feel that the three lots at 2.4 units per acre would be also preferable.
Thank you. Again, based on, you know, the turnout from the community that I've talked with and trying to keep it harmonious and compatible, like we discussed, I think, you know, you can have that fight with the city when it goes before them for final, but tonight I'm going to have to ask you to go to, if you are fine with two lots.
We will accept that. Yes, we will accept that.
All right. So that, if there's no other, anybody wish to speak, I'd like to make a motion
Please do.
To approve item 23, GPA 75931 with the RE.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Mr. Vice Chair, the change is going to be on the zoning request, so that's where you're going to downgrade that zoning request.
All right. Fair enough. Okay, so a motion to approve item 23, GPA 75931 is written.
There's a motion on the floor. Please post, and that motion carries.
Thank you, and good evening. I do have a copy of the site plan showing two lots I can give to staff.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make a motion to approve item number 24, ZON 75932, with the condition that this is to be RE.
Oh.
Two lots.
So again, Mr. Chairman, through you, if I may, just to clarify for the record that the motion is to approve this at the RE zoning district. Two lots is all they can do, but for the record, it's just to approve it for the RE zoning district.
That's correct. Thank you.
So motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on July 3, 2019.
Thank you. Moving on to related items 27 through 36, I'm going to open them all up. Abeyance GPA 75969, applicant D.R. Horton, owner Scott Family Trust et al., for possible action request for a general plan amendment from R to L on the north side of Alexander Road, west of Durango Drive, Ward four. Staff recommends denial. Related item number 28, abeyance ZON 75972, for possible action request for rezoning from RE to R1, Ward four. Staff recommends denial. Related item number 29, abeyance VAR 75973, for possible action request for a variance to allow a 1.0 connectivity ratio where 1.3 is the minimum required, private streets without a gate to not be constructed to public street standards, and a non-gated modified street terminus where a cul-de-sac is required. Ward four, staff recommends denial. Related item number 30, abeyance VAC 75974, for possible action request for petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements on portions and on portions of a public sewer easement, excuse me, staff recommends approval. Related item number 31, abeyance TMP 75975, for possible action request for tentative map for proposed eight lots, single-family residential subdivision, Ward four. Staff recommends denial. Item number 32, abeyance GPA 75971, applicant D.R. Horton, owner Johnson Trust, for possible action request for a general plan amendment from R to L on the north side of Alexander Road, west of Durango, Ward four. Staff recommends denial. Related item number 33, abeyance for possible action on the request for rezoning from RE to R1, Ward four. Staff recommends denial. Related item number 34, abeyance for possible action request for a variance to allow a 1.0 connectivity ratio where 1.30 is the minimum required, private streets not constructed to public standards without an access gate where such is required, and a modified street terminus where cul-de-sac or hammerhead is required. Ward four, staff recommends denial. Related item 35, abeyance VAC 75978, for possible action request for petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements, Ward four. Staff recommends approval. And related item number 36, abeyance TMP 75979, for possible action request for tentative map for proposed eight lots, single-family residential subdivision, Ward four. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed general plan amendments and rezoning would allow a density of 5.49 dwelling units per acre and a minimum buildable lot size of 6,500 square feet. The subject parcels are within Planning Area B of the Northwest Interlocal Agreement, which requires a minimum buildable lot size of 10,000 square feet. Therefore, staff does not support the general plan amendment and rezoning request. Staff does support the vacation request. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the vacation requests and denial of all other applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. My name is Tony Celeste. Address 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton, which is the applicant for both parcels. They're each about two, little over two acres, one located on the hard corner of Alexander and Giuliano, and then the second one located just east of that with a parcel in between the two properties. On the overhead, you can see they are highlighted in, when you're looking at the aerial, highlighted in yellow there. Appreciate your request and me allowing, allowing me to do these both together, since they are essentially very similar, if not the same, applications. First, we have the general plan amendment request. We're asking to go to low density. I do understand that that allows over five units to the acre, but when you look at the tentative map that we have associated with it, it basically would be capped at around four units to the acre. As much as we'd like to go to desert rural and have that capped at three and a half, just cannot make that accommodation right now. The properties are located along Alexander Road there. They are only two, little over two-acre parcels, the build-out and infrastructure. For those small portions attributed to those sites will be significant. We have to build the full offsites, curb, gutter, sidewalk, right-of-way there, and those costs are expensive. So having, adding additional lots to each one of those does, does make a significant difference with respect to the developer. So we are asking to go to the low density to accommodate that. When you look at the zoning R1, again, these lots are on the larger side of the R1. I'll show you the tentative map here in a second, but the lots range anywhere from about 7,000 square feet to over 12,000 square feet, so exceed the R1 standards. Also, if you can take a look at the bottom of the map there, you look at Alexander Road, especially on the south side of Alexander, you can see a lot of those developments, RPD V developments, that have quite a bit larger density than what we're proposing. So we do think that the, the general plan and the zoning specifically, when you take a look at a tentative map, do comply and will help provide the much-needed infrastructure in this area. Here's the, the site, or the site plan along with the essentially tentative map. I think what's most important here, what we're demonstrating is, at least on the western two, two-plus acres, that you can see, the way we've designed this, we only have two lots on both sides. The two lots match up against the existing two lots just to the north of us, so we've kept that integrity with respect to the way the lots look, the layout of that. So that, I think, is very important. When future development comes in just to the north, that will be the established pattern and a pattern you would expect to see with respect to the lots being developed in here. So we think, at least with respect to the design, we've designed it in a way to be compatible with what is existing out there. Couple other technical things we have, with properties limited in size like this, it's very difficult to meet the connectivity ratio, especially the one on the eastern portion. That is essentially landlocked. It only has one ability out, that's Alexander. So to meet that connectivity ratio on a very small parcel is very difficult, and when you have something already developed to the north of you on the other parcel, again, it makes it, makes it difficult to do that. Certainly, if we were coming in with a 10-acre, 15-acre type development, at that point, I could definitely understand and seeing the need for, to meet those connectivity ratios to help provide for, for better flow. But when you're talking about an eight-lot cul-de-sac that really only has the ability to get out to Alexander, we do think the connectivity ratio that we're providing, the variance, is appropriate. We do have the typical patent easements associated with it. And finally, I know there was a, some discussion or concern about the design of the cul-de-sac or the turnaround. Did speak with our engineer. We feel very confident that we will be, that it does meet those turnarounds, and we will continue to work with, or that it's designed to the RTC standards and work with the fire department as we progress through. We agree to all the if-approved conditions, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in these items? Please come forward. Come on up. We have three microphones. I'll need your name and address for the record, if you're for, against, and why.
Hi, my name is Eugene Elliano.
Could you spell your last name?
It's E-L-L-I-A-N-O.
Thank you, Mr. Elliano.
And I, I live right here. This is my house.
Okay.
And, and all the other neighbors, I got together with all the other neighbors, and we, we don't like this idea of eight houses in this small area. It's rural area, so there should be two houses per acre. And I've talked to all the other neighbors, and they, they agree with me. They, they don't like it.
Okay. Thank you for, anything else you want to add to it?
Well, it'll bring our property values down, you know? I bought the house, and having these small houses there, it'll bring the property value down, and it's not good, at least for all us neighbors, you know? We bought it to, because it was a rural area, and all the houses would be, you know, big. And if you notice, they're building all the other houses in the other around the neighborhood, big houses, except he wants to build small houses here. I think it's not fair, at least to me, anyway, and to the other neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Elliano. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate you coming out.
All right.
Anyone else like to be heard in this item from the public? Seeing no one else, I will, okay?
I'm just living, my name is Armin Graff.
I'll need you to speak into the microphone and...
My name is Armin Graff. I'm at 49th North Giuliano. This is just behind these houses, and...
Mr. Graff, is it G, how do you spell your last name?
G-R-A-F.
Thank you very much.
And I came from Europe. I bought this property two years ago. With the only reason that this is a rural area, because... that this is a rural area, because we were told two houses per acre. Everybody has a pool there. There are big lots, and that's the only reason we are there. So this would destroy the neighborhood, and everybody's against it. So we please ask to keep the zoning as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Graf. Thank you for coming out. Seeing no one else from the public, I will close the public hearing, turn it back over to the applicant. I'll give you a minute for rebuttal before it goes to the commission.
Thank you. Appreciate the neighbors' comments. Again, this is just a couple of things. One, I think this will provide a very nice transition along Alexander with respect to everything that's interior moving north. These are by no means small lots. Some of the lots are 10,000 to 12,000 square feet ample size to do a lot of amenities in your backyard, including pool. This is a new build. Dr. Horton Home will be probably starting above $500,000, and then when you add your upgrades and various things like that, you're talking about, you know, $600,000 to $700,000 easily. So this is not something that will deteriorate the neighborhood in any mean. And again, this is going to be a mixture of a single and story, one and two-story home, so it'll provide a nice mix and compatibility with the area.
Thank you very much. I will turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Toussaint?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Graf and Mr. Elliano for coming out. I appreciate you being here. I have family and friends that live on Alexander and Durango, and I'm on this corner all the time. I don't agree with you that it's going to bring your property values down. In my opinion, it'll bring your property values up. These homes are going to go for almost $700,000. Having, in my opinion, having this area developed will enhance your property rather than just having desert there. And personally, I think this is a beautiful project. I know that Dr. Horton does a quality project, and I want to thank Mr. Celeste for coming here and explaining this to us. Personally, I do not have a problem with it. I think this is good for the area. I would love to see this area be developed. I think this is the perfect thing to be developed there. So unless any of my other commissioners have anything to say, I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Slavon?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just three. I just wanted to say that Mr. Celeste met with me, and everything that he said today represents what he said to me in person, so just wanted to put that on disclosure on the record. And one of the things that we constantly look at is values of properties and stuff like that, and that's something that we can't consider as board, even though I don't agree with you, and I think this is going to be a nice project. I don't think it's going to be detracting from any other person's property values.
Thank you. Commissioner Slavon?
Okay, on item number 27, GPA 75969, I vote for approval.
So motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Please post. That motion carries.
Item 28, ZON 75972, motion to approve.
So motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Please post. That motion carries.
Item 29, VAR 75973, motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Subject to conditions.
Subject to conditions, yes. Thank you.
Please post. That motion carries.
Item number 30, VAC 75974, motion to approve.
Subject to conditions.
Subject to conditions.
Thank you. Is a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Item number 31, TMP 75975, motion to approve.
So motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Subject to conditions. Please post, and that motion carries.
Item number 32, GPA 75971, motion to approve.
There is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
Item number 33, ZON 75976, motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Please post. That motion carries.
Item number 34, VAR 75977, motion to approve.
So motion on the floor, please cast your votes.
Subject to conditions.
Please post. That motion carries.
Item number 35, VAC 75978, motion to approve. What conditions?
Subject to conditions. Is a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. Please post. And that motion carries.
And item number 36, TMP 75979, motion to approve.
Subject to conditions.
What conditions?
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. Please post, and that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items 27 through 36 will be going on to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on July 3rd, 2019.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item number 41, VAR 76187, applicant owner Brock and Stephanie Goddard for possible action on a request for a variance to allow existing eight-foot-tall walls in the front yard where five feet is allowed, and to allow a 40-foot front yard setback where 50 feet is required, and a six-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required for two proposed patio cover additions to an existing single-family dwelling at 50-50 Elkhorn Road, Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this application includes existing walls that do not meet Title 19 height requirements and two proposed patio cover additions that do not meet Title 19 setback requirements. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and staff therefore recommends denial of the variance request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here tonight? If I can get your name and address for the record, please, and if you could tell us about your application.
Hi, Stephanie Goddard, 50-50 Elkhorn Road, Las Vegas, Nevada 89131.
Thank you.
And I'm the applicant's father, Brent Conrad, 5336 Elkhorn Road.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Could you tell us about your application?
We're just looking to do, well, the wall was built before we purchased the home, so we didn't know that that was going to be an issue when we came into this. But, and then the front porch addition, we were just looking to get some shade cover over the south sun being in the windows.
Okay. All right. I will open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Oh, I have one person here. No problem. You should name an address, please, for the record.
Sure. Joseph Demani, on behalf of the Valley Grove Family Trust, 5,000 and 4950 Elkhorn Road. We're the only two properties that are neighbors to 50-50, and we're in support of their motion to have their walls stay the same height. Elkhorn's an extremely busy street. It's getting extremely busier based on the new developments in North Las Vegas. Foot traffic as well as vehicular traffic and cars parking on the street has increased exponentially since that construction has started just east up Elkhorn Road. The Goddards also have horses. That wall clearly protects their horses or anybody possibly doing any damage or teasing of the animals and so forth. So we're in support of that, and it causes no problems to the neighborhood whatsoever.
That's very nice of you to come out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to be heard?
Yeah, Brent Conrad again. The, I'd like to point out that the setback of the wall, and it looks just like the tracks around there because it allows for the vision to come off of the side street on Tom, and if you, on your overhead, those, noticing the pictures, you'll see that it's not up against the property line. It is set way back in there, and from Tom, you have very good visual up the street, up Elkhorn to see around it, and it looks just like the perimeter of the housing tract just to the west. So it, I don't, it really does conform, even though it's out of code or so, or whatnot.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to, the public hearing is closed. I'm going to turn it over to the commission for discussion. Vice Chair DeSavio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for coming out tonight. I actually pass this property pretty much every day, way right down the street myself. I have no problem with it. I really don't. I think it fits. It's clean. It looks nice. The only thing I would put on it as a condition, which I'm actually having staff do it right now, is that you would get a permit for that wall, so that way you don't go through any problems if you decide to do any more development in the future, because I'm sure, is that how you got Whistlebit? You submitted to have it done, and then they came out and said, "What's this?" So let's get that cleared up. Are you good with trying to obtain permits within 30 days? Okay. He'll draft the proper language. Me layman's terms is, I have no problem. I think it's harmonious and compatible. It fits, but I'm going to put a condition on that agenda item that you obtain the proper permits for that wall within 30 days.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve item 41 with staff's conditions.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so, Mr. Vice Chair, so there'd be an, your motion would be to add a condition that applicants are, trying to remember how we normally word this, building permit application shall be submitted within 30 days of final action, with final inspection within 60 days of permit issuance, to be extended by the building official at his discretion.
And you agree?
I'll need you to come up on the record and just, if you could just tell us you agree. Thank you.
State your name. State your name.
Stephanie Goddard.
And you agree?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. You heard the motion.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening, unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 42, VAR 76198, applicant owner Stephanie Pang for possible action request for a variance to allow a four-foot separation from the main building where six feet is required for an existing accessory structure at 2109 Linda Vista Street, Ward 1. Staff recommend denial. Excuse me, can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and staff concludes that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature. Staff therefore recommends denial of the variance request. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry. I'm sorry.
I need your name and address for the record.
Stephanie Pang, 2109 Linda Vista Street, Las Vegas, Nevada 89102.
Thank you. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Recently, I live next door, 2107 Linda Vista, and recently my neighbors had been very sick, and he passed away, and I purchased his house, and it come with the shed, which is the one I'm showing. And he'd been sick for almost 10 years, and he'd been putting all this stuff there, so I just purchased it because I'm, before I lived next door. And that I'm requesting a variant for six, for four, six-foot separation requirement, for four-foot separation requirement, and they also still have their four and a half, four and a half foot separation from the next property.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie Pang. I will open this up for a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission for discussion. I guess I'll start off. Commissioner Quinn is not with us today, and as I always say, she's a great steward of the neighborhood and usually helps us through, and meets with applicants in this area. You know, I'm looking at the photos of the building, and it's pretty, it looks pretty rundown, the entire property.
Like I said, the neighbor have it for 19 years, and he'd been sick almost the last 10 years. He's recently passed away. Purchasing, actually, I've been fixing and cleaning up that because I lived, I used to live next door, so, and I've been cleaning it up, so.
I think that's what I kind of wanted to hear, is what the plan is. I do see that there is a change in ownership in 2017.
Yes.
So your plan is just to keep cleaning it up and...
Yes, uh-huh. Yeah, because like I said, I used to live next door, but he'd been, he'd been sick for almost like the last 15 years, and he just recently passed away, and then he couldn't do anything, or just keep powering up, and I purchased, I've been cleaning, and...
And there's still, is there a code enforcement issue that you're working on still with the property?
I'm sorry?
A code enforcement issue?
No, no. Actually, the front yard used to be piled up, and because he's sick, I guess they give him a special permit not to do anything. He usually, you know, he was, the whole house was full of stuff, and he has kind of sickness, and the last 10 years, they actually, they give him special permit not to do anything because he was really sick, and he passed away two years ago, so.
Okay, I guess a question for staff. If this is approved, I mean, am I looking at the right... So I saw, I see the picture in our backup, but I saw other pictures that showed the front yard. Okay, there we go. It's on the overhead there.
Yeah, that's, that stuff is all gone, just only that recently that rain, and then that, those are, we got all gone too, so.
Okay, any other commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Slavon?
Just looking at the photo, I mean, the accessory structure looks just taller, taller than the house. It's unfortunate that somebody built this and you're having to deal with it now, but it's not, it's not visually pleasing. I don't see anything about this. It's adding in value to the neighborhood, and I just don't think I could support this. I mean, Commissioner Quinn was here or something. Maybe she would request a neighborhood meeting or something, but as far as I go, I mean, at this point, I couldn't support this.
Okay. Vice Chair DeSavio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm on the same lines as you, Commissioner. Looks old. I don't even know if I put a condition of, I'm sure there's no building permits or nothing. If there are, it's, something's up, but I couldn't support it either. I mean, actually, I think it's doing an injustice to the rest of the property that's sitting there. To me, it looks like an eyesore, honestly.
No, I am improving it. That's why, I didn't know you guys have a picture before I purchased, or you have any picture before I purchased that you could see the difference. So this is actually, before, that the front yard was actually, they, he have probably like 10 different beat-up car, doesn't run, and he got holes in the ground because they've been digging, and...
And we believe that unfortunate application is just for the shed there, their accessory structure, you know?
I know, but I've been improving a lot, so.
Okay, well, it's still improving or not. I mean, we have to make a decision if it's harmonious and compatible and worth granting, and I'll be honest with you, I'm sitting with, when I'm hearing with my other two commissioners. Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
I'd just like to be specific a bit. I mean, I think the property could be taken care of a lot better. However, that's not what I'm basing my motion on.
Right.
My motion's specifically based on, you know, that structure, and, you know, it, there's not the required distance separation in between that building, and it just, it's kind of overbearing when you look at that compared to the house. But I think you have a beautiful house. I think you can clean it up and make this a beautiful property, but I just don't think the storage shed fits in there very well. For those reasons, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, through you, on item 42, VAR 76198, I would move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Yes voters for denial. Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Yes voters for denial.
So what's the next step? What do I do?
One second. Please post. And that motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on July third, two thousand and nineteen. So it's been recommended for denial by the Planning Commission this evening, but City Council will weigh in and make a final decision at their meeting starting at nine AM on July third, two thousand and nineteen.
July third, where do I go?
You'll come right back to this room.
Okay.
And it'll be the City Council that will hear the item and make a determination. I'm sorry, the actual planning items won't be heard before eleven AM, so if you're here by eleven AM on July third, your case will be heard on that agenda.
July third?
July third. Wednesday morning, July third, eleven AM.
And what do I have to do before then, then?
You'll come before the City Council and state your case of why you think it should be approved. We're, we're a recommending body to the City Council, so you'll have to come back at that date for another hearing with City Council.
Okay.
And if you do have additional questions, staff can certainly help you out while we keep the meeting kinda moving along.
Sorry?
If you want to step to the side there, we're gonna keep the meeting going, and Eric can help you out there. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number forty-three, SUP seven-six-two-three-four, applicant owner Lady Kyle LLC for possible action request for special use permit for proposed six thousand square foot liquor establishment tavern use on the east side of Osso Blanco Road, north of Kyle Canyon Ward, Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Related item forty-four, SDR seven-six-two-three-five, for possible action request for a site development plan review for proposed commercial center consisting of six thousand square foot tavern, a fifty-one hundred square foot retail building, an eighty-foot-tall freestanding sign, wireless communication facility stealth design with waivers to allow five-foot-wide landscape buffer adjacent to a portion of the south property line where eight feet is required, and a ten-foot-wide landscape buffer adjacent to the east property line where fifteen feet is required. Ward Six, staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has proposed a tavern and retail building for an irregularly, irregularly shaped lot that meets the minimum requirements set forth by Title Nineteen for a commercial development, with the exception of the areas encumbered by the NV Energy easement. An alternative landscape plan has been agreed upon that will still provide trees and shrubs within the easement area while complying with NV Energy's requirements. Staff recommends approval of both the SDR and SUP with conditions. Staff does need to revise condition number three to read, "All development shall be in conformance with the site plan and landscape plan date stamped five fourteen nineteen, and building elevations date stamped five twenty-one nineteen, except as amended by conditions herein." And we also need to amend condition number six to read, "An exception from Title Nineteen zero-eight is hereby approved to allow cassia tree within the landscape buffer adjacent to the east property line and within the NV Energy easement. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Doug Rankin, ten fifty-five Whitney Ranch Road, Henderson, Nevada. Yes, I've, this is a development at the new Kyle Canyon Interchange. It's a six thousand square foot tavern. We have reduced the retail building to four thousand nine, thousand, nine hundred square feet in order to accommodate some additional trees along here that weren't part of our original plan, so we were able to get the back of house pulled forward in order to get that landscape in. We do have a small landscape waiver right here. We're still providing the required number of trees, but this allows us to utilize parking. Since this site is so tight, we wanted to make sure we had adequate parking here. So it's a very small buffer area here, approximately twenty feet in length. The Nevada Energy Easement runs along this section here, where we're limited to what landscaping we can place in there, and we've selected a tree that is very nice. It flowers, but it only gets to twelve feet in height, which Nevada Energy likes because they don't have to come and chop it down if it gets too big, so it meets those requirements. The sign itself, signings along the US ninety-five is allowed to be up to eighty feet tall. This is proposed as an eighty-foot sign. As part of this, the cellular antennas will be placed inside, behind panels, behind the sign, so it's a fully stealth antenna. You can't see it, so it's a sign and an antenna both. The elevations themselves are, we worked very hard to try and match both Sky Canyon development standards and the Kyle Canyon Interchange design, and this is the design that our architect came up with. He wanted to make sure I showed this. He's very proud of this design. This is the tavern itself. If there are any other questions, I'm here to answer them. We agree with all of staff's conditions and their recommendation for approval.
Thank you. This is noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard on these applications. Seeing no one, I'll turn it over to the commission for discussion. Vice Chair DeSalvio?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Yes, this, we do believe this is harmonious and compatible for the use in which they're placing it on this irregular-sized lot. The only thing I would just want it for clarification is to make sure that, that the sign wouldn't go up until there was a C of O on the, on the buildings?
That is correct. We would agree to that, but that is, you can't get a sign until you have a building.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record, but you do agree with all staff recommendations?
We do.
Okay. If I don't see any other commissioner with a comment, I would entertain a motion for approval of item number forty-three, SUP seven-six-two-three-four. With staff conditions.
Vice Chair DeSalvio, before we go, were you, did you hear that the public hearing portion was open?
He's the applicant.
Yeah, this, this is Dan Reynolds. He owns the tavern located on Charleston. He is the applicant and the owner.
Great. I did open it, but I wanted to make sure. I apologize.
So with that, I'll remake the motion for approval with all staff recommendations for SUP seven-six-two-three-four.
There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Please post. And that motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and make a motion for approval on item number forty-four, SDR seven-six-two-three-five, with all staff recommend approval, please.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post. And that motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on July third, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Chair Cherry?
Yes.
Just to clarify for us, on the first one, there was no added or amended condition, correct? It was just subject to conditions?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number forty-five. I will be abstaining from forty-five and forty-six. My family's in the cannabis industry and contracts with all these dispensaries, so I will be abstaining. Vice Chair?
All right, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Item number forty-five, SUP seven-six-one-six-three, special use permit for Canostars owner Pine Mountain Holdings for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed five thousand square foot marijuana dispensary use at six thirty-one South Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. May I have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed marijuana dispensary meets all Title Nineteen special use permit requirements, and staff finds that the proposed use is compatible with surrounding uses. Staff therefore recommends approval of the application. Please note that there are additional letters of support and protest since publication. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Slavon.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, through you, just want to make a disclosure that I've worked on many of dispensaries, production facilities, and cultivation facilities throughout the past five years or so, and however, I've always voted on all these with the exception of the ones that I was working on, and it's not gonna affect me any greater or lesser than anybody else. My independence judgment won't be affected here, so I'll be voting on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Lucy Stewart, nineteen thirty Village Center Circle, representing Canostars, and this is the location of a new dispensary that was approved back in December. This is the site of the Showgirls video, which has been vacant for a little bit, and they've purchased the site, are cleaning it up, and we agree with all of staff's conditions and respectfully request your approval.
Okay, this notice is noted as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open it up to commissioners. Commissioner Slavon?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, through you, reading through the report and taking a look at the location of this new establishment. I think it's in, in an area that, that where it'll fit well within that neighborhood. I don't have any objections. Staff doesn't have any objections, so therefore I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
Mr. Vice Chair, on item forty-five, SUP seven-six-one-six-three, I move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
You've heard the motion. Please, yes voters for approval? And that motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, that item is going on to City Council and will be heard a part of their agenda on July third, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you very much.
Next item, number forty-six, SUP seven-six-two-three-two, special use permit, public hearing, applicant owner Main Street Investments LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed three thousand seven hundred and twenty square foot marijuana dispensary use at thirteen nineteen South Main Street, Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed marijuana dispensary meets all Title Nineteen special use permit requirements, and staff finds that the proposed use is compatible with surrounding uses. Staff therefore recommends approval of the application. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Paul Murad.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Paul Murad with President of Metroplex Realty. We're the property manager of this property for the property ownership group, also the leasing agent for this property, and it's property right on Main Street, along the beautification of, of Main Street that had occurred and completed recently, and the, this property was used in the application for a dispensary license. In December, it was one of the applications that did not get a dispensary license. However, with everything that's going on with that dispensary licensing round, we believe that potentially there might be a second chance opportunity for that group in particular, and then also a couple of other groups that approached the property ownership since then. So with that in mind, they wanted to get this property already approved for dispensary use, so that it's not putting the card before the horse, but putting the horse ahead of the card, I suppose, and getting that approved for dispensary use and ready for, for that use. This block in particular has been very depressed. There's been no activity there, except, until recently, there were some rehab homes that were put in there, but otherwise it had a lot of vandalism, a lot of issues in, in that particular block, just from that area not having any businesses and vacant buildings. So we believe that this use and this dispensary will actually improve the block with the added security, both, you know, video cameras and actual physical security, and also bring businesses, bring people to the businesses that are nearby. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. This is noted as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and hand it over to commissioners.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, through you, a couple of disclosures. First, I've built several dispensaries, production facilities, cultivation plants, and however, my independence judgment's not gonna be affected on this one, so I'll be voting on it. And second, I did some preliminary investigation on this building. Must have been two, three years ago. Never win wares. I was paid a hundred percent for everything, all the work that I've completed, and I don't have any ongoing business relationship with Mr. Murad, so I'll be voting on this matter. And third disclosure on this property, I do own a bar, urban lounge, within the notification area. However, historically, I would not vote on a matter if it was alcohol-related. However, since it's not alcohol-related, I've historically voted on other items in the arts district. But after all those disclosures, I'll just wrap up by saying I think, I think that this location would work. You know, I, it's not too far off from where a lot of the bars and everything else are opening on Main Street. Really happy with what the city has done with the streets and sidewalks and festoon lights, and this is an exciting little area, so good luck, and ready to make a motion.
Please do.
Mr. Vice Chair, on item forty-six, SUP seven-six-two-three-zero, I would move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, that item will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on July third, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. Moving on to citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to the matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speakers allowed may be limited. Seeing no one, I just want to quickly thank Commissioner Flegas for joining us and sitting with us, with us through the meetings. It's always great to see you, and happy you're here with us.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Commissioner. With that, the meeting is adjourned.